Good evening, welcome to the June regular meeting of the Minot City Council. Roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Canol.
Here.
Fransdahl.
Here.
Frye.
Here.
Hadley.
Here.
Hedberg.
Here.
Janther.
Here.
Lehner.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pankow.
Here.
Schuler.
Here.
Seymour.
Here.
Shmento.
Here.
Barney.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Alderman Hadley.
I would move consent on three and four.
Mr. President, I would second that motion. Okay, move by Hadley, seconded by Lehner. Any discussion? Call or roll.
Hadley.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Janther.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento. Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Fransdahl.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we go further into the agenda, I'd remind everyone to please silence your cellphones so that we can be unimpeded by ring tones and so forth. Item five is a public hearing.
A public hearing to consider a request from Harlan Baim to move a 1966-year-built, 1,367-square-foot, single-family residence from 1213 Sixth Avenue Southwest, Minot, North Dakota, to 109 Twenty-Fifth Street Southwest, Minot, North Dakota, also known as Dakota Home Second Edition, Lot 6, Block 3.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody having an interest in this issue, this item, who would like to speak to it? Now is the time, please. Anybody here to speak to this House move item?
Alderman Fransdahl. Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the request.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Olson. Any discussion? Call or roll.
Fransdahl.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Hadley.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento.
[coughs]
Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item six is a public hearing.
A public hearing to consider conditional approval of a Renaissance Zone project submitted by North Dakota Mattress Ventures LLC, known as Mattress Firm, Jason Seller, for a state income tax exemption to lease space in the building located at 400 South Broadway, also known as Original Brooklyn Edition, Lot 1, less Street, and lots 2 through 6, north 10 feet, Lot 7, Lot 12, less south 5 feet, plus portion Lot 10, Block 21, and all vacated Fourth Avenue, and lots 13 through 20, plus alley, Block 40, less portion for right-of-way, parcel 15. This is Renaissance Zone, item number one.
Okay, anybody who would like to speak to this public hearing, please come forward. Public hearing related to the North Dakota Mattress Ventures Company.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Lehner.
I would move that we close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Frye. Any discussion? If not, call or roll.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Fransdahl.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Hadley.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Item seven is another public hearing.
A public hearing to amend a previously approved conditional application for a Renaissance Zone project submitted by Micah and Sarah Bloom for a 100% five-year property tax exemption, including improvements but not land, for the five-year personal income tax exemption to rehabilitate their home located at 511 South Main Street, also known as Blaisdell Subdivision, Lot 9, Blaisdell Subdivision, Block 13, Ramsteads River View Subdivision, north 50 feet, west one-half, Lot 6. This is Renaissance Zone, item number two.
Okay, this is an opportunity for anybody to speak on this Renaissance Zone application. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this? Anybody who would like to speak? Alderman Lehner.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we close the public hearing and advance the item. Pass the item.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Frye. Any discussion? Seeing none, call or roll.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
No.
Seymour.
No.
Shmento.
Yes.
Berg.
No.
Canol.
Yes.
Fransdahl.
No.
Frye.
Yes.
Hadley.
Yes.
Hedberg.
No.
Motion carries. Item number eight. Item number eight is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for people to address the city council on any item that is not on our agenda tonight. So if you have something that's not on the agenda and you wish to speak with the city council, yes, sir, please come forward. If you'd be so good as to state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate that, and then proceed.
There we go. Yeah, Robert Field, 2710 Belair Drive.
Yes, sir.
I was here a month ago. Two things, again, talking about traffic lights on Main Street and the bump outs. But first, if I could address the traffic lights. There has to be something wrong at Public Works. There's no getting around that. We're not going to have traffic lights because of this report right here. They did it in 2014, supposedly in-depth of traffic and pedestrian, you know, coming and going. And as far as I'm concerned, it probably isn't worse than the paper it's written on. Just to give you an idea, one of the reasons why traffic lights, a big reason, traffic lights are out, pedestrian count is way down. Hmm. Well, let's look at their traffic count. Do you know when they took it? In February. February 5th, 6th, and 7th. Do you know what the weather was like on February 5th? 23.9 degrees below zero chill factor, winds gusting to 28 miles an hour. Now you go figure that out. There's no reason, I guess that's the reason why the pedestrian count is down. So it's things like this, and all I can say to something like that is, you know, Lance, you know, shame on you, should be spanked. There's no reason for garbage like that. And as far as the one on vehicles, that's absolutely unintelligible, you know, average delay per vehicle, and dah 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 dah. I can't get into that, but no one can tell me that Minot, North Dakota, their downtown doesn't deserve or need traffic lights. Look at the activity. My goodness, we've got 250 apartments coming, and our downtown is growing. You know, I had occasion to go to Washburn last week, and Garrison, and I thought to myself, I guess when they take the lights out of Minot, it's going to look just like Washburn and Garrison, and there's no reason for it. I don't understand it. There's some smoke and mirrors there somewhere, but I, it should be looked into, because if the survey, this thing, had the right figures, we could have new street lights. They'd be funded, or funded in part by EDA, but when you get stuff like this, you know, it's hard to imagine Main Street, Minot, nothing but stop signs. And it's thought that they're going to take Central and Second Avenue thoroughfares. Can you imagine that? Thoroughfare from Broadway and Second Avenue, right straight across to high school, down to Third at the other end of the street. I, it's just not something that we can accept. The other, of course, are the bump outs, and this really confuses me. I've written an article for the newspaper, people are stopping me, saying, oh, damn, he said, just, thanks for saying just what we wanted to hear, we wanted to say. I've been to, you know, a downtown business meeting, a DBTA meeting, and I asked people there, we start talking about the lights and the bump outs, and I asked people, I said, who here likes that intersection at Central and Main? No, one person did. And I bet you if I ask you people, how many people here like that intersection at Central and Main? Do you want your other intersections to be choked down?
Okay, sir.
Yeah?
We're not doing a straw poll, I guess.
Okay, so.
Please direct your remarks to the council.
Okay. Yeah. Anyway, frustrated because everywhere I go, no one is for them. So I don't know what else to do. I wish our city engineer was more on the ball. I don't think he's competent. He's trying to tell us that that intersection at Central and Main is safer than it was before, and I don't think anyone can say that, so. Yes, I just have to let you know what I feel, and we should be able to do something somewhere. Okay?
Anyone else? Personal appearances related to anything that is not on our agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. The mayor is out of town. I have no report from him. We will move on to the report of the city manager.
Mr. President, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to update you and the public on what is going on around the city, and there's a few things that I want to cover tonight. The first thing that I would like to cover is give you an update on where we are with the National Disaster Resilience Program. For, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me first show you the upcoming meeting schedule. We have changed the dates of the Finance and Improvement and Airport Committee. We moved that to Monday, the 27th, and the Planning Commission will follow thereafter. The reorganizational meeting following the election on the 14th will be on Tuesday, the 28th, at 6:30 PM right here, and then everything else will follow the normal schedule, but that's a change from what was publicized previously, and I wanted to make sure you all are aware of that because of the upcoming election next Tuesday. And it's two weeks following that, so it'll be on Tuesday, the 28th. As you recall, from the National Disaster Resilience Competition back in January of this year, when we were notified that the city had won, these are the projects that were brought out. The reduced flood risk and increased resiliency, and what we said we wanted to do was a layered strategy of gray, green, and nonstructural techniques to reduce risks and costs, and a lot of that ties into what you will see the program is and will continue to become as we continue to engage the public in order to make sure that we're doing things correct. We'll build affordable, resilient neighborhoods. We continue to look to ways to get people out of harm's way. As you know, we bought out a lot of properties that are associated with the footprint of the flood protection system, and we're also looking at this program to tie into the water storage requirements within the city of Minot, to move some additional folks out of harm's way, and that includes the elderly, the disabled, and the homeless first and foremost. Foster economic resilience and diversification. The last thing on there was the concept that we had talked about previously, which is movement of City Hall and the 911 call center out of the floodplain, and then associated with that is a one-stop social services facility, which I will talk a little bit about here in the next few minutes. We did a resilience academy in New York this year, and what we know going forward is the following. We sent three of our people, the finance director, the chief resilience officer, and a federal compliance officer. We need to make sure that we measure the metrics associated with that, because I will tell you, it is my opinion, after having received all the guidance and everything, and the Federal Register was finally published this last Friday out of Washington, DC, Minot, as you recall, was only one of three cities that was notified, the fact that we were winners. And I will tell you that Minot will and is right now the poster child for the Department of Housing and Urban Development on how small communities can be awarded money and do this right. So we will be under the microscope of the federal government, in my opinion, in the next few years as we implement this program. But as you recall, we wanted to make sure that we won, and we did, and now we have a problem, and that's okay. I'd rather have the problem as opposed to not winning, so I think we did very well. We need to be responsive to needs to the city of Minot, and we need to reflect the values that are in the HUD program. That was emphasized over and over again, and as I said before, there's lots of reporting requirements that the city has to undergo, and that's the reason we need the assistance of some local people and consultants in order to get this program done. And finally, we need to make sure we communicate this so that we can input into the federal system exactly the benefits that we're supposed to be achieving. We have to do this on a monthly basis for the entire time that the program is undergoing within the city. So we have a monthly reporting requirement to HUD to tell them the values that we're achieving, and these things have to be measurable, so we have to come up with these in the next 30 days in order that we can put them into the system. And finally, we have a list of partners that was included in the city's application to that. Some of those are nonprofit agencies, some of those are companies that were associated with us as well. I've had a number of firms that have come up to me over the last four months that said that we want to be part of the process and part of the program. What I've told them to do is if you look at the list of approved partners, and those were approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, in order that we can facilitate this program over the next six years. So if you go onto that list, you find one of those folks, and for us to go to you, what we can do is you can link up with some of those folks that are already approved. If you're not on that list, and we need somebody with expertise outside of that list, what we can do is we can go through the formal RFP, RFQ process for any other types of services that we need, but it's very important for you all to understand that we have to follow the guidelines as we go through this. Let me go back one. Preparing additional acquisitions, diminish risk by getting more peoples out of harm's way. What we did is when we looked at the footprint of the flood protection system throughout the city, and as you know, it'll take many years to complete, what we're focusing on right now throughout the community is the first three phases of the flood protection system. Once we're able to design and fund and build Phase Four in conjunction with that, we can very easily take about 60% of the people out of harm's way. What about the rest of the folks that live within the valley? We heard over and over again, what are you going to do for us over the next 20 to 25 years? So what we said was, we want to make sure that we look at additional areas within the city where we can actually gain value by moving some folks out of harm's way, giving them opportunity to move into a resilient neighborhood so they don't have to wait for the flood protection system in the valley to be completed before they're protected. So we've identified four to five other areas throughout the community, and as a result of these areas, if we're able to achieve what we say we are going to do, it will actually lower the cost of the flood protection system. So the cost to the citizens of Minot and the cost to the state government will actually be lower by acquiring this additional property, because what it does, it gives us additional storage area, or it changes the location of the flood protection system, changes the wall height, changes the levy, so that we can actually gain more value out of that, all in the line of trying to move people out of harm's way. We will identify potential homes in there. We plan on doing that over the next few months, so we can contact these folks that live in this neighborhood. A number of them have, people have come to the city over the last few years saying, geez, my home's not in that area, but, you know, can you acquire my property as well? So this, we heard this over and over again, so that's the reason that we came up with this system. And all will be evaluated with the Minot floodplain. As you know, that floodplain is going to change drastically, and all of these folks whose homes that we're looking at will lie within the new floodplain. Identify potential public gathering spaces. During the course of this, we heard many, many times over the fact that the public was looking for places around the city where different neighborhoods could gather as a community, and they can do outdoor activities within their own neighborhood as opposed to going someplace else. So instead of just looking at one of these, we're now looking at three, and those three areas are throughout the city. We're going to have our first public meeting on the 24th of June, and we'll have public meetings over the course of the next few months to not only identify the right locations, and there's a number of different partners that we have to talk to in order to make this happen, but also make sure that we get this right, so we understand what the folks that are living in that area are looking for, and we'll be able to provide those types of services to those folks. This has to tie into what the Park District is currently doing, et cetera, et cetera, so we just don't duplicate something that's not needed. Vulnerable population action plan. I want to remind the city council the fact that there's a difference between available and affordable. A lot of folks have come up to myself and other folks on the team over the last six months and say, what are you going to build additional housing within the area we don't need anymore? Well, what we need to do is we need to make sure that we look at that study, and what we're going to do is we're going to reach out to all those folks that have a stake in this, in all those different agencies, to say what really are our affordable housing needs right now within the city of Minot. I realize that when we wrote the application several months ago, there was that information that is there is dated, and so we need to update it, and we're going to do that. So we're going to be putting something online as we create the city's resilient page, and I'll talk about that in a second, but we're going to reach out and try to get as much public input, especially from those folks that have a stakeholder piece of this, in order to make sure we get this information correct. We need to see what's in the city's best interest, and we will do that, and we'll figure out what the scale of this program will be. And then we need to establish resilient neighborhoods. We have a lot of places within the city that after the flood of 2011, some work was started and never completed. You all know where those are. You've seen them, just as I've seen them. We've put infrastructure in there. Some people came to the area, made a lot of promises, and didn't fulfill it. So what we're going to try to do is pick up the pieces of that and build upon what's already there as opposed to creating something new, and that's the intent that we have going forward. And again, we'll hold additional public meetings in order to make sure that we bring this into fruition. Program milestones, the buyout program. We're going to begin now and trying to get information in so that we can start the offers in the fall of 2016, and we think we can do, complete the entire program throughout all of the areas of the city that are under the flood protection system by the fall of 2019. Public gathering spaces, start the meetings now for the public meetings. We'll have public meetings over the next few months. We think we can complete the designs of all three of those spaces, or whatever the number ends up being, by May of 2017, and we think we can complete the work on all of the sites by the summer of 2020. Family shelter and vulnerable populations, we need to establish exactly what the need is. We're going to establish our Vulnerable Population Committee again, of which some of you and some of the folks that are in the audience tonight are members of that. And then we want to see exactly what is required, and then we want to make sure that we address this need first and foremost. So that's the reason I put as soon as possible in there, because we think that's the most pressing need that we need to address within the city. And finally, affordable housing and resilient neighborhoods. We have already began the process to update the housing information, and we think we can develop, design, and construction period should be between 2017 and 2019, at latest 2020. As you all know, we requested an additional time waiver so that we can take this out till 2022. That waiver was not published in the Federal Register, however, we still expect that waiver to be granted, and we should know that within the next 30 to 45 days, when they will publish some additional information. So that's some piece of information that the city does not have at this time yet, but we expect to receive that very soon. Long-term commitments, everything that we're doing within the city right now has to have a resiliency component. When we look at the city's flood protection system, when we look at the transportation network, when we look at how that ties into the downtown infrastructure project, when we look at all of the things that need to be done in our community in the future, all of it really ties together. The HUD dollars in this program is really just one piece of a puzzle, and as we put this piece of the puzzle together, what is first and foremost, the most important thing, is community engagement. I beg you to become part of that community engagement. I ask the public to become part of that community engagement. We'll only get this right if we have the input from the people. We have an opportunity to do this right and to do this well for not only the people that are here now, but all the future generations to come. This is a game changer for our community, and as I said before, the HUD piece is a small subset of what we're trying to do, but everything ties together. So with that, we will launch our webpage on the 10th of June. I have a couple more things, Mr. President, but does anybody have any questions on what I just gave you?
Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. City manager, it is abundantly clear that this will be a major transition for this community, because you took it upon yourself to find the availability of the resiliency funds, and we entered into that competition, and we did in fact prevail. I would like very much if you would remind the general public who the three cities are that did in fact prevail, and how really, absolutely unique our position is within the nation in that regard.
Mr. President, Alderman Miller, thank you. I want to tell everybody that we wouldn't have won this application wouldn't have been for all of the people that are right behind me, because having the input with the public was very, most important, and I think when you looked at all the cities that actually applied, Minot had the most public meetings and the greatest percentage of participation. That doesn't mean that we need to improve upon that, we just had a lot of folks. So I want to thank all those folks that were part of that. To answer your question, I can't remember what it was.
The three cities that did in fact prevail.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I remember. Oh, I got ahead of myself. New York City.
Yes, sir.
New Orleans.
Yes, sir.
And Minot, North Dakota. And when you look at the dollar amount that was awarded for each of those different communities, if you take the population of New York City, they were awarded $2 per citizen. Minot's was $998 per citizen within the Ward County area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the city manager? Alderman Seymour.
Mr. Mayor, my question is, city manager, when you read the rules in the Federal Register, were there any surprises in there that kind of surprised you a little bit?
Mr. President, Alderman Seymour, I think the biggest surprise was when I didn't see our automatic waiver. So when they told me you had to do this two years faster than you anticipated, I fainted, and then I got up and said, okay, we'll make sure that we address that one more time. I'm very confident the fact that it's going to be done. We made a very good argument, and when we talked to those folks, they said, that is coming, so please pick up the city manager, and he'll be fine, so.
Thank you. Alderman Canol.
Thank you, Mr. President. City manager, stop. The question I have is, and you're talking about surprises, and thank you for bringing that up. The surprise in my life was we're about to approve this agreement, the amendment to agreement for the CDM Smith for the National Disaster Resiliency Competition, and we got $74 million from the federal government. Am I correct in seeing that we are going to pay CDM Smith $17 million to administer this plan? Is that the correct number?
City manager, I believe this item is actually on our agenda coming up, Alderman Canol. So I guess if you want to speak to it now, that's perfectly fine.
Mr. President, Alderman Canol, I'll be glad to do that. When you look at the entire program, what we, the amount that you see that's listed in front of you is the entire leveraged amount. $74.3 million actually is from the HUD dollars. The other 130-some million dollars is leveraged amounts from the state and/or other agencies, varies. But, so the total program is 200-some million dollars. The CDM Smith contract that you see in front of you is to provide the services that the city does not currently have. Okay? It's actually about 9.7% of the entire 200-some-million-dollar contract, which is very reasonable over that period of time. The other thing, as I told some of the folks that were at the committee meeting the other
night, is that is a scope of work that has yet to be determined. What I asked those folks to do, because they were very important for us as we wrote the application, to ensure the fact that we were successful, is to show me the scope of work if we gave the entire program to you and said, "We just want you to do this." There's obviously pieces and parts of that, and maybe we'll pull out something. I'll give you an example. If we say the community gathering space, we'll do that in-house. So everything associated with that, all that level of effort will be done in-house by the people within the city. But we still have to determine exactly what that scope is going to be, exactly what the requirement is, exactly how many people we have on hand, and do we have the staff on hand in order to execute those things. So yes, the amount in there that is written is 9.7% of the entire contract, but I feel very confident that over the course of the next six years, as we develop what that scope is, there are some things that we're going to pull back, obviously, because we don't want them to execute it. But I wanted to make sure that we had everything that was encompassed in there, so when I look at what the level of effort is going to take us to do it, if we do it in-house, what is the estimate on what it's going to take, and how many people do we have to bring on, or do I have to shift to bring some people in that have the whiteboard space and the skill set in order to do that?
Mr. President, again.
Follow.
Yeah. That's good, because I must have misread the way that thing was written in the paper, because it looked to me like it was $74 million and $17 million to administrate, and that's 23%. So I was a little nervous about those numbers. So I know we're going to act on that, but I just wanted to let you know what I thought about that.
Alderman Miller.
Thank you. Follow-up on that question. Would I be accurate, Mr. City Manager, in saying that when you incorporate the leverage funds in addition to the award for the resiliency competition, that we find that the contract with CDM Smith is actually, in fact, under 10%, which is well within any norms at the national level and particularly at this level regarding those dollar amounts?
Mr. President, Alderman Miller, you're exactly correct. What we did is we went back, Mr. President, over a period of time to see exactly what are some of our consultant contracts we were paying as far as the percentage-wise. Most of them ranged in the range between 10 and 12%, so I felt pretty comfortable when I looked at the bottom line of this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager? Okay, are, were you going on to the construction update then, sir?
Mr. President, yes. With your permission.
All right. Please proceed.
Okay. What I want to show you very quickly is some of the other things, and I've overstepped my time, so I apologize to all of the folks that are here tonight. The road closed. You can see exactly what we're going to be doing over the, the parking ramps are now done. We have the skin to put on the outside of the building, and we need to do that over the next few months. And then it's up to the developer in order to determine exactly what's going to happen as we go forward and the timeline associated with that. The downtown infrastructure project, you can see that work is progressing there very well. When I asked the city engineer, and you're going to have a report right in front of you that tells you where we are. When I asked the city engineer to give me a project update, we're actually right on schedule, so we haven't seen any other issues. There's a lot of lessons learned last year that we're able to apply this year, and you can see the first milestone is upcoming here in about four and a half to five weeks. The Oak Bridge project, you see the detour out there, and you can see that that will be closed until approximately July 8th. And again, we see no issues associated with that, so that work should be done on time. The water treatment plant, if you've been out there, and you can see the amount of work that's going on in the water treatment plant, there's a large amount of construction. As you all know, we closed 16th Street on the 31st of May, and we anticipate that being back open prior to the start of the school year, which is very critical for our bus routes and all of the folks that are taking the kids to school next year as well. Sixth Street pump project right outside of this building. What you, I even had asked last week, why are we digging up the street one more time? Because I don't know, I should know everything, but I don't, so I had asked that one more time, and what happened was we had a previous contractor on there that had done some damage to the street. So we actually added it, that requirement to the folks outside so we can get that repaired back, and they actually laid the second level of that asphalt, so that street should be open here very, very shortly. But again, I appreciate the patience of the public as we finally bring this thing to closure. We'll get that pump tested, and then they'll be out of there.
Mr. Staub. I had somebody ask me, you know, we had the recent rain last week or whenever it was, you know, somebody said, "Well, you know, we tried to drive through there, and there was some water in that bottom of that thing, and, you know, when is this thing going to be live?" And I think most people don't realize that the, actually, the new pumps haven't been activated in there yet, and so that's why the symptoms are unchanged when we have a rain event. But is there like a target date for that activation, do you know?
21st of this month.
Thank you, sir.
37th Avenue project, that's going on in the southwest part of the city, and you can see the expected completion date is later this year before the onset of winter. We haven't seen any problems associated with that as well. Employee recognition. What I'd like to do is I'd like to recognize two folks, and Mr. President, in front of you, just to your right, you see two city coins that are laying there. And I'd like to call these individuals up, but first I'd like you to, I'd like to read you this letter. "I wanted to share with you my experience about two Minot City employees. I'd spoken with Miranda Schuler about the alley behind my house, which is an access point for my garage late last fall or early winter. It had been damaged due to demolition at home next to me. I had nothing but a big, muddy mess, a big, muddy mess. I spoke with Miranda, who spoke with Mr. Rick here, who said that they do something, and that happened today. They were very two nice men in the alley early this morning, Nick Reynolds and Guy Strom. Would you stand up, please?" Yeah, she did say "nice and good-looking," so I'm glad that part was correct. "They were so very nice, polite, pleasant, and hardworking. I believe all the attributes you want in an employee. There were five loads of sandy gravel mixed, dumped, and spread in the alley. They used a blade and smoothed it all out, swept the excess off the driveway, and cheerfully finished up late this afternoon. Thanks to these two guys, my alley is beautiful. I had, all exceeded all my expectations. I'm very grateful." So what I'd like to do, Mr. President, with your permission, if you guys would go up there, the President and the City Council is going to give you a city coin. So can we give these guys a round of applause? Just for your reminder, the, just for your two guys, as a reminder, the coin rule, as next time you see President Janssens any place in any eating establishment, if he doesn't have his coin on him, he owes you an adult beverage of your choice, just to let you. And I haven't given him one, so I know he doesn't have it. It is. Chief Olson.
President Janssens, members of council, I just want you to indulge me for a few minutes. I would like to tell you about the actions of three of your police officers. This time, I'd like to call forward Officer Kevin Love and, or Officer Kevin Corey and Officer Ray Sean Love. Also, I'd like to call forward Mrs. Terry Aldrich. Just going to read a report I received from one of my sergeants, and then Mrs. Aldrich has a letter she would like to read. "April 22nd, Minot Central Dispatch received a call about an unconscious 64-year-old male who had fallen in the bathroom but was still breathing. Officers Jared Foley, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, he's away at training, and Ray Sean Love were the first to arrive. They determined the male was not breathing and was in cardiac arrest. They started CPR immediately to include the use of the AED twice until emergency medical personnel arrived. When Officer Kevin Corey arrived, he escorted the wife into another room so he was able to speak to her and comfort her. Officer Corey then assisted medical personnel in the ambulance by continuing to perform chest compressions en route to Trinity Hospital. Once the patient arrived at Trinity, medical personnel continued to work on the patient and were able to revive him. At the time of this letter, it says the patient is currently recovering in the intensive care unit." I'd like to call forward Mrs. Terry Aldrich.
Members of the council and City Manager, you know, I have had so many wonderful opportunities to speak to you on a variety of the issues that I am very passionate about, but I never expected that I would have the opportunity to say thank you to you for the Minot Police Department, for their preparedness, for their prompt response, for their level of uncommon care. Because on April 22nd, you heard what the chief said, that was my husband, it touched my heart. Their work and what they did on that night impacted my life and the life of my family for years and years to come because of their prompt response, because of their preparedness, because of their training. I have my husband. My family has their dad, and it means more than words can say. And I thought about reading my daughter's letter that was printed in the Minot Daily News, but I would just like to read the last paragraph to you because it speaks our gratitude in a way that I couldn't. She, her words are wonderful. So she says, "It's hard for me to really even express my emotion with this because words don't really cut it. But when I arrived home as soon as I could after talking to my mom, Officer Love was there with his wife looking for her. He wanted to know how she was doing. In the days that followed, he visited my dad in the ICU, checked upon my mom, mowed the grass for her at their house. I feel like I've gained a family member. I know that these officers, that neither of these officers did anything that they did for recognition. But I feel with a world that often sensationalizes negativity, good ought to be recognized. They went above and beyond. The call of duty saved my dad's life, and Ray Sean continues to be some kind of guardian angel to us. Please see that they receive the highest honors because they have demonstrated the highest form of humanity. Love." Thank you.
So they were nominated for North Dakota Beast Officers Association Life Saving Award, so I'll ask Mrs. Aldrich to please present them, and this is for Officer Kevin And this is for Officer Ray Sean Love.
Thank you very much, Chief. City Manager?
Last thing I have, Mr. President, is just the 2017 budget schedule, the key dates. As you can see, we'll submit the annual plan presentation to Civil Service Commission on June 15th, and the second reading of the budget will occur on September 19th. Last item, Mr. President, is, I wanted to show you this, because he's not here, I thought I could do this. And I did tell him I was going to do this. The mayor is going to be in the dunking booth this Friday, so for all of you up here or anybody behind me that wants to take, partake in this, Mayor Barney knows that his picture was going up on the docket tonight, so thank you very much.
Very unexpected news, but we appreciate it. Okay, any other questions for the City Manager? All right, if not, we are moving on. Assistant City Attorney, do you have anything from your office beyond the report that was submitted?
I do not, Chairman, but I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions anybody may have regarding the written report.
Okay. Any questions for the attorney's office? All right. If not, we will move on. Item 11, consider the report of the Magic Fund Screening Committee. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Hadlet, seconded by Lehner. Hearing none, call the roll.
Hadlet.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Franzwag.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item 12, consider the report of the Planning Commission.
Mr. President?
Alderman Miller.
I would move consent agenda on all items reported to us by the Planning Commission, that is to say items 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Olson. Okay, so what this means is that the items from the Planning Commission will be passed as they were coming out of that committee. If you are here for any one of those items and would like something different to happen than what the committee recommended, you can ask to have the item pulled, and we will discuss it individually. If you're okay with what the Planning Commission did, then we will pass the motion that's before us and move on. Seeing no one, any discussion from the council? If not, call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Franzwag.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Hadlet.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item 13 is the report of the Finance and Improvements Committee. Alderman Franzwag.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had 16 items on our agenda. Item 15 was held in committee, and I've been asked to pull item 16. I would move consent agenda on items 1 through 14.
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Olson. Again, so with this committee report, we are going to pass items 1 through 14 as they came out of committee. Item 15 has been held, as was stated, and then item 16 will be up for discussion. Is there anybody who wants to talk about any of the items in 1 through 14? If not, we'll move ahead. Seeing no one.
Mr. President?
Alderman Miller.
I would move item number 16 that's been pulled.
We have to vote on the consent motion first, Alderman Miller.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, call the roll.
Franzwag.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Hadlet.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pankow.
Yes.
Schuler.
Yes.
Seymour.
Yes.
Shmento.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Canol.
Yes.
Franzwag.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Hadlet.
Yes.
Hedberg.
Yes.
Lehner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item 13 is the report of the Finance and Improvements Committee. Alderman Franzwag.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had 16 items on our agenda. Item 15 was held in committee, and I've been asked to pull item 16. I would move consent agenda on items 1 through 14.
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Olson. Again, so with this committee report, we are going to pass items 1 through 14 as they came out of committee. Item 15 has been held, as was stated, and then item 16 will be up for discussion. Is there anybody who wants to talk about any of the items in 1 through 14? If not, we'll move ahead. Seeing no one.
Mr. President?
Alderman Miller.
I would move item number 16 that's been pulled.
We have to vote on the consent motion first, Alderman Miller.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, call the roll.
Franzwag.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Hadlet.
will come forward throughout all of this, as they did when we were in the competition nationally, we will make a community that the entire nation will look to at many levels. So it's not unlike President Abraham Lincoln said, "The outcome of this matter, my fellow countrymen, lies in your hands, not in mine." Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the agreement. Call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panckow?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Seymour?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Canol?
Yes.
Franzwog?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Hadlet?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item 14, Public Works and Safety Committee. Alderman Canol.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had 15 items on our agenda, and I move all 15.
Second.
Second by Lehner. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Canol?
Yes.
Franzwog?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Hadlet?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Canol. Item 15, the report of the Airport Committee. Alderman Hadlet.
I would move consent on items one through five.
Okay, second by Lehner. Any discussion? Items one through five. Anybody want anything pulled? Seeing none, call the roll.
Hadlet?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panckow?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Kind of a layout of our existing seven cells that have been permitted by the state health department. You can see cells three, four, and five are all identical in size, so it's kind of hard to compare the time it took to fill one and two or projections for six and seven. But it took, you know, half the amount of time to fill four into five than it did three into four. So at our current rate of intake, we've got less than 10 years of capacity left at our So one thing we've been looking at is ways to expand. We've contracted with CPS, a consultant, and we're looking at, we don't have a big, large, flat spot out at the landfill right now where we can just start putting in lined cells and placing trash. So what we have is the area in the green that you can see on the photo, that is old trenches from back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s prior to the early 90s when the health department started regulating landfills. Those are unlined cells. So there is a lot of garbage in there. So our proposal, or what we've been looking into, is potentially going into that area, excavating all of the old garbage out, placing it into the lined cells six and seven that we would build, and then lining those areas, and then using that area as new landfill space. The area in green, if we were to do that, that would give us about 20 years' design life, and comes at a cost estimated to be about $37 million. As a comparison, the cost to build the original seven cells will, we don't have prices for six and seven, but it'll be under $6 million. We've been looking at land acquisition to potentially buy land around us that has not been going so well to date. So like I said, we're just, we're exploring options. So one of the things we looked at is recycling. That can potentially divert some waste from our landfill. Pretty much, you know, industry standard, about 50% of what you throw away can be recycled. So we've looked at, or what we're proposing is curbside, single-sort recycling. It's the simplest form for residents, usually results in the highest participation rate. So on the left, that's the City of Fargo's recycling program. You break down your cardboard boxes, lay them on the boulevard, then you have a blue tote that's supplied, you put your newspapers in the bottom, then you have separated, your material has to be separated, plastic, glass, and metals, they have to be bagged separately. And then they have a truck that goes around and picks up and takes your sorted recyclables. What we're presenting is single sort. You get one blue tote, it all goes in there. So then what happens to it? What we're proposing is that it'd be picked up by the city trucks, be taken to a transfer facility and loaded onto trucks, and then taken to a materials recovery facility in Minnesota. And what is a materials recovery facility? I had a video, but it was about five minutes long, so I didn't, I'm trying to keep this brief. So basically, this is a photo of a materials recovery facility. Basically, it takes the commingled recyclables, they come in one end, and they sort them back out on the other. And then they sell them as commodities on the open market. So in order for us to collect the recyclables, we would need to transfer to automated garbage collection, which is something that we've been looking at in the last few years, anyway. So the two kind of work well together. So what is automated collection? You'd get two specifically specially-designed roll carts, one for garbage, one for recycling. The roll carts are picked up and emptied by collection vehicles that are equipped with mechanical arms designed to lift the roll carts, empty the contents directly into the collection vehicle, and return them to the ground. And I have a short video. This is the City of Fargo. This is for you, Mr. Lehner.
I see the trees and the wires in the alley.
Yes. This is a standard 25-foot alley. Oh. Thought you said this worked, Derek.
It did.
These trucks are dual-arm, so they just drive down the middle of the alley. They have an arm on each side. The truck that you see there isn't any higher than our current trucks. The arms are designed to stay below the top of the truck, so you don't have to worry about getting into power lines, phone lines, things of that nature. You don't have to drive down one side, turn around, and drive back to the other. That's what automated collection looks like. So why have we been looking at automated collection? There's a lot of different reasons, not just picking up recyclables. It's more efficient, it's cost-effective. We can do the work that we currently use, we have 20 workers, drivers, and haulers, we can do that with 10. Worker's safety. Workers' comp insurance claims average about $12,500 a year over the past four years for our sanitation department, with about 345 lost man-hours. Sanitation claims account for 22% of city WSI claims, but only 4% of the total workforce. And nationally, solid waste recycling collection workers are three times more likely to be killed on the job than policemen or firefighters. That, I just found that out today, that's why I put that in here. That's kind of a startling statistic, but they come in contact with infectious waste, sharp objects, they work in extreme cold, snow, ice, they're kind of like the postmen, you know, rain, sleet, I don't remember their motto, but something along that line. They're always out there. It's a cleaner look for the city and the neighborhoods, reduce customer complaints, and then there's some abuse of our current system that goes on. So this is what Minot looks like on collection day. Piles of kind of unsightly garbage. When it's not in a receptacle, it has the opportunity to blow around. This is collection day in other facilities. On the left, you have the City of Fargo. The top middle, that's going on right in the City of Minot. That's a trailer park out in East Minot. The lower middle, that's the City of Burlington, and Grand Forks is on the far right. Reduced complaints. We get a lot of complaints about busted trashcans, and sometimes my guys are probably a little rough on a trashcan. Sometimes maybe the trashcan's cheap, sometimes it's cold out and it's a combination, it's you. But under this plan, we provide the garbage cans. If we break it, we'll give you a new one. This is a couple of examples of abuse. Our collection workers pick up a lot of contractor waste. And so our code of ordinance states, "The amount of waste picked up per dwelling unit shall be limited to normal and customary amounts ordinarily generated by a typical dwelling unit in the city, given due heat and allowances, season of the year, and special circumstances such as Christmas, or someone moving in or out of an apartment." So the two photos below, those are both photos from flooring contractors that go into a house, remove the carpet, put it on the curb for us to take away. We would just like to get out of that business. So like I said, what we're presenting is going to an automated-type collection. So based on the recommendation that Miranda read, this is what the program would look like. We would start up automation in 2017. Each resident would receive a roll cart, and we're still working through sizes and things of that nature. Service would remain two times per week. All trash picked up must fit in the supplied cart. Bulk or large items, you can call for a pickup. And the city would implement a spring and fall cleanup week for the people that just have large amounts of garbage they got rid of. If you can hold on to it a few months, whatever you can get to the boulevard, make it disappear. That's just, it's not an additional charge or anything, it's just, it's a free event two times a year. Then getting into our recycling, we would work over the next couple of years to design and build a transfer station for recyclables. We would deliver recycling carts to residents in early 2019, and then we'd go to trash collection would be Monday, Tuesday, recycling collection Thursday, Friday. So costs. Everybody's been curious as to what the costs are. So currently, our residential collection rate is $10.18 per month. That rate has not changed since 2008. And as you can see from the graph, the $10.18 hasn't changed, but our cost of collection has. So over the last six years, there's about a $5.25 gap between what it costs to pick up the garbage and what we're receiving in collection. So I guess regardless if we go into recycling automation or otherwise, there's probably a good chance that rate should increase, anyway. So take a look at the sanitation budgets. Based on our meetings, we went ahead and did some preliminary budgets for 2017, 18, and 19. So 2016, 2.04 million is our sanitation budget. Next year, we would project that that number would go up to 2.42 million. Really, the reason for the higher amount is that right now, we have all of the workers still working for us. So just to make sure that we find a place for those people to work, we basically budgeted to have them on staff through all of next year, with the hopes of, through attrition or transferring to other departments, then we'd get that number down to the 10 that I referred to earlier. So in 2018, the budget actually goes down from this year, 1.96 million. And then in 2019, it ticks up a little, and that's probably just a one-year deal because that would be the year that we would buy the recycling totes for the customers. So there's 11,500 containers we'd have to buy at a cost of, you know, somewhere around $70 per cart. So we would project in 19, you'd probably see yet another reduction rate. So, you know, you're looking at a $2 million budget, and, you know, it fluctuates by maybe $100,000 from year to year, depending on what's going on in that given year. The one thing that's not included in these budgets is the transfer station. We estimate the cost of that transfer station to be about $2.5 million. You know, we've got some options for funding. We would plan to come forward with a community facilities grant application. There's sales tax, existing sales tax funds that we could target. Or if we were to decide to bond for it, that would be something that would go on the residential collection rate. And our estimate is $215,000 per year for the debt repayment, which would equate to about $1.55 per resident per month. And that brings us to questions.
Alderman Hatlen.
Jason, are you proposing to lease these, the trucks and containers, or outright purchase?
Initially, to get the program started, yeah, we would lease six new trucks. They're five-year leases. And then, once those leases are up, there are zero buyout, so we would run them, you know, for a few more years. They have a life expectancy of eight to 10 years. Then we would start programming replacements later on.
Thank you.
And actually, the totes, we're actually going to lease those for five years also.
Okay. Alderman Lehner.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You answered the question about the extra garbage, so you could call for an extra pickup if you needed it.
Definitely.
The other thing I was wondering is, there seems to be a lot of discussion, at least in my neighborhood, because we have a number of duplexes, some, these are houses that have two apartments in them, and some have three, a couple down there have four. Now, I'm pretty sure, I guess I haven't stood there every day, that the garbage men go by, but I think they're picking up at all of those places. And I guess my question would be, what constitutes a commercial development which would then have to go to a private garbage pickup, right?
Right. And right now, if the City of Minot's picking up, we would continue to pick it up.
Even if it is a threeplex or a fourplex?
Right. If there's three separate water, sewer, garbage accounts, each one of those customers would get a canister.
Okay. But if it's a duplex with one account, landlord is paying, if I may, the landlord's paying all the fees, then you would have one container per, for both apartments?
Yeah.
I mean, there seems to be quite a bit of that in some of the valley where, I mean, there's a lot of that before the floods, some of the houses have been put back into multifamily of two or three, usually two.
Those are some details that, once we get into this, would have to be ironed out.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Alderman Schuler.
Thank you. Jason, I know we've talked many times about the people in the community that are maybe older or have physical disabilities, and I know we've discussed that, and I know you and John have taken it upon yourselves to call some of the other communities that we've been speaking with, coming up with this plan, to find out what they're doing. And can you elaborate on that for us as well, please?
Yeah, certainly. You know, throughout the public meeting, and between then and now, I would say the bulk of the phone calls with regards to what we're proposing has been, what about elderly people that can't handle this tote or whatnot? So we've looked into, you know, what other communities are doing. Specifically, Grand Forks, Bismarck. Fargo's doesn't do as much with it as some of the other communities, but like Grand Forks and Bismarck, what they've done is, if you are disabled and you can't physically get this cart down to the street, they ask that you present a letter from your doctor stating that you're not able to do that. And under that program, the City of Grand Forks and City of Bismarck both then have a valet program where you'll get the cart, it'll sit up by your house, you put the garbage in it, when the garbage man comes, he'll wheel it down, he'll dump it, and he'll wheel it back up to your house. So in the City of Grand Forks, they're a town of, you know, somewhere around 53,000 people, they had less than 40 people that they perform the service for. I think the City of Bismarck has a very similar program, and I think they had less than 30. It's, this is something that's going on in most of the major cities in North Dakota, so I just, I think we can get through this hurdle, I guess, if that's what people are seeing it as.
It's nice not to be the guinea pig, probably, huh?
Yes, definitely.
Alderman Pankow, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jason, what does the acceptance of a community, or how fast does the percentage grow to the optimum 50% of people participating in recycling? Because to me, the goal of this whole thing is the postponement of $37 million, and that's where the real meat of the payback is. How does that build over the first couple of years? Do you have that information?
You know, it varies from program to program. It's really difficult to zero in on. You just, it's like the City of Fargo, they have a participation rate of somewhere around 16% of the people that they collect garbage for do recycling. We would certainly like to get higher than that number, and that's why we've looked at single sort. But what some communities have found is people are just resistant to it. They get the tote for recyclables, and it just sits there, and they continue to put it all on the garbage tote and bring it down to, bring it down to the curb. You know, so we need to work through an education program and show people how this is, this is a good thing, and it's something we all need to try to be better about. And the other thing with regards to that is the, what you need to look at is the 85,000 tons of MSW that come to us every year. Even if we add 100% participation rate in the City of Minot, the most you're going to divert is half of what we collect in Minot, which is about 15,000 of the 85,000. But that's why we looked at building our own transfer facility. We've spoken with, you know, circle sanitation, waste management, where they're the bulk of the commercial haulers that are bringing trash from, you know, say Stanley or Dillacs, Burlington. And we would hope that we could get some of those other communities engaged in recycling, and then we could provide the transfer facility for their recyclables also. And really try to drill down and hit that big number. We're gonna, you know, this is a kickoff. We need to get the City of Minot going, and, you know, hopefully, we can get some additional participation outside of the City of Minot.
Alderman Schuler.
One comment on that. I think the single sort is the key to a lot of that. When he speaks about Fargo, I had some conversations with one of the commissioners there, Tony Garrick, who is in charge of the sanitation, it's within his portfolio, and they in Fargo are looking to go single sort. So many of the things that we came up with as a committee was a result of conversations with these other communities that are already doing it, things that they liked about their existing programs, things they wished they would have done differently, for us to come up with a program that utilizes their experiences and the things they wished they would have done differently.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
I've had a lot of calls, well, on both for recycling and against recycling. I've had calls about people that want more information. I think recycling's good, but I think we've got to do some more rein here. The request for the budget deal is kind of open-ended to me, you know, I've seen his figures on the landfill redoing that, you know, and I know that sometime that's got to quit, but it's open-ended, I don't see what the trucks are going to cost, there's no figure for, a guesstimate for transporting recyclables someplace else. People want to know what this is going to cost, you know, and I, I'm not comfortable with giving an open-ended budget. But I think we can nail it down closer than what we have it.
The cost for the trucks and the containers are in those numbers that I showed you. Yeah, the leases for the trucks and the containers are in there. It's hard for us to put a number on what it's going to cost to haul recyclables out of here to Minneapolis, because we don't know how much we're going to get. You know, we've had estimates from local truckers, it costs about $125 a ton to get material from here to Minneapolis. So if we can, say year one, we get 1,000 tons of recyclables, it's $125,000, that would end up on the landfill side of the budget, which, those are certainly numbers that you'll see through the budget process when they come forward.
Alderman Franzwog.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sorensen, does your numbers change after 2019, then, when we have the transfer facility up and running? And if so, does it go up? Have you looked at that, or maybe it goes down a little bit? Maybe our hauling goes down, or?
The, really, the only number that changes is that hauling number that Alderman Fry referred to. Until we know how many tons of recyclables we have coming in, we don't really know what that number is going to be. You know, so once we get closer to having, if this goes forward, we get our transfer station built, I think we just have to build a placeholder into the budget of a couple $100,000, just to make sure that whatever we get, we have the funds to transfer to Minneapolis.
Mr. Chairman. Alderman Pankow.
Would it not be the, I'm not sure if it's for the city manager or Jason, but the intent of this motion to move this forward would just be to place it in the budget year. I would ask the chairman, maybe too, that with that process, that we'll have the ability, come the budget approval process and more information gathered, that we can pull it out of the budget at that time.
City manager, do you have a comment?
Mr. President, and Alderman Pankow, you're exactly correct. What I asked these folks to do was to work up the figures so that when we get the public works budget, just like all the other departments, we'll put it in there, and we'll assess on exactly what the cost is going to be. We're going to balance that against the other requirements of the city and see what the impact is. When I give you the briefing at the committee, the whole, you'll clearly see this as a set aside, so that we can include it or not, you can make the decision at that time, and then you'll be able to balance this requirement against everything else that's in the budget as well.
Thank you, city manager. Mr. Chairman. Alderman Fry.
I would like to bring across the point that when I have people calling me, asking about more information, I think we have to get that out to them, you know. Evidently, they want to know more about it, and evidently, they haven't heard. I don't know if they don't get the paper, if they have missed some of the things on the television, but I think we're going to have to really sell this program if it's going to work, and the people have to know what's going on. Thank you.
Alderman Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important, too, to note, I know there's been a lot of people who've said maybe we just leave the collection the way it is, and then include a new recycling plan on top. Through our studies, we realized, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but adding the automation piece, how much did that reduce the budget? Just the automation piece alone, approximately?
At the public input meeting, I presented the entire landfill and sanitation budgets combined, and it reduced, it reduced about half a million dollars.
And the recycling piece, there's no question that that is, that's where the cost comes into play. So if we were to add a recycling program to our existing garbage collection, that could be a pretty large increase for the citizens of Minot. So the automation piece, which most of the calls that I've received, is where the cost savings comes into play. So those are things that are important to know about the way that we came up with this decision.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Franzwog.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our city manager just said that he's going to put it in the budget. I'm not sure what we're doing here, then, if it's going to be an add-on for us. Anyway, city manager puts together the budget. What is our role here? Obviously, the city manager puts together the budget for us, and we get to look at it. If it's going to be in there, we don't need to up or down vote on this. This is adverse to the normal budget process, which is, which would be having the chief come up, the fire chief, police chief, and each one. I'm going to be supportive of it regardless. Tonight, budget time, anytime, I'm going to be supportive. I'm, as the city manager knows, I'm all about process here. I think the committee did hard work and a lot of work. I think that committee should have been a recommending committee to the city manager's office, and not necessarily to this body, because it sounds like the city manager has made that decision to give us that option at budget time, which I agree with. But then to put it in front of us right now and say, "Give us the opportunity tonight to say yes or no," I think is a little premature at this point, just because of the process. But again, I'm going to be supportive in it, supportive of it, when it comes time to implement the process. I just don't think this is the time to do it.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question I have, Jason, is, do we have a long-range plan to get all the private and public haulers? I mean, it's a huge, we're only, we're only 18% of what's going into the landfill, so that other 82% is going to come from outside the community, and it will be, it will not be recycled garbage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what is our long-range plan for getting them on board?
I guess, you know, between now and 2019, that would be our intent, is to engage those other communities. They need to, they need to understand that their garbage just doesn't vanish and disappear, that somebody's handling it somewhere down the road, and, you know, increased cost for us will result in increased cost for them. So I, you know, it's going to be on us to get the word out to the other communities that bring their trash to us, that we're all in this together, and to try to get them on board.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other? Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we, discussion amongst the council or the, or with Jason? Jason has completed his presentation, so we're open to discussion amongst members and?
Certainly.
Before the vote? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. What we're being asked to do here this night is embark on a three-, four-year plan, which is a substantial and major change in the way Minot currently handles this matter. What outweighs all of this consideration to me, to the level that there's quite candidly no comparison, and I want to be just perfectly clear on this, I support recycling, I commend the committee, you put in a lot of time, you did extraordinary work, and this ought well continue, and I do, in fact, support recycling. But what I'm saying right now this night is this, in seven days, one week, we may well change the total form of government of the City of Minot, and we may well have, for the most part, all brand-new members here. That is up to the will of the people. And in many ways, we're trying to buy a pig and a poke with unknown costs. Well, my goodness, some pigs, some poke. Prudence indeed would dictate that we wait until we hear from the people in one week as to what they have in mind on a consideration that far outweighs this in the long-term ramifications and consequences. I fully intend to vote no. Again, I commend everybody, you did outstanding work, but for this to come now, when the budget hearing isn't till September, let's hear from the people at the ballot box. Let's see what form of government they want to have for their community. Let's see what form of government they want to have for their community. What direction do the people want to go? And who do they want to have represent them? And whatever that outcome is, it is the will of the people. That's what will prevail. And for those who will be sitting here in one week, or maybe only half of this number, we don't know that, we're waiting on the people. All the authority lies with the people, as it should. So let's wait, hear from the people, and then act on this following that. That's the larger consideration.